Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five work session. Mr. Russell, we have one item, alternative project delivery contracts process review, the APDCPR. Everything deserves an acronym.
Mayor and Council recently did receive a update on preferred direction for our biosolids treatment, and as part of that, we're looking at an alternative project delivery methodology for construction of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Director of Public Works, Keith Haskins, to deliver the staff report.
Thanks, Doug. Good evening, Your Honor and Council. With me tonight online, I have Scott Bueker with AE2S, who will be co-present. The City of Kalispell typically utilizes a process for capital improvement projects called design, bid, build. This process is currently used for all city projects and has stood the test of time. However, recently on specialized projects for the wastewater treatment plant, we've been struggling to get interest from contractors. You may recall from the Fermenter Rehab Project last year that we went through three iterations of bidding before we were successful in getting the project under contract, putting the project about a year behind the planned construction schedule. The first time we bid the project as a separate schedule in a larger project, assuming bundling the two projects together into a single larger project as separate schedules, would create some interest. Unfortunately, we received no bids on the Fermenter Schedule, and the second schedule for the EQ Basin was about two times higher than the engineer's estimate. We then bid the project a second time by itself in April of last year. Again, no bids were received. Finally, we revamped the project to address some of the concerns of contractors who were previous plan holders on the project but did not bid. This third time, we were successful in getting two bids. As we are going through this iterative process of bidding and outreach to contractors, we also reached out to other communities to see how they were delivering projects and began evaluating other project delivery processes. One of those processes is referred to as general contractor construction management. Since we already had one hundred percent design plans for the Fermenter Project, and the project was pretty straightforward in project scope, the general contractor construction management process didn't really fit, which is why we continued forward with the design bid build process, tweaking our design and contract requirements to address contractor concern until we were successful at getting bids. However, we did see the potential benefit of using the general contractor construction management process on future projects, especially with the, within the wastewater treatment plant. Tonight, we are going to present some information on the GCCM project delivery process. Although the process is new to the City of Kalispell, alternative project delivery processes have been used throughout the U.S. and the state of Montana for quite some time. We thought we'd start with a quick review of the impetus behind our upcoming biosolids project. Biosolids are treated sewage sludge. Glacier Gold has been accepting the biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant since nineteen ninety-three. In two thousand and four, the limit on dry tons from the wastewater treatment plant was set at six hundred dry tons per year and has remained there since. As we began to approach our contractual limit with Glacier Gold, and Glacier Gold didn't have additional capacity, in two thousand and eighteen, HDR completed a biosolids management plan for us. As part of this analysis, thirteen alternatives were evaluated, with only four being viable alternatives that were further scrutinized: landfill disposal, ag fertilization, Class A compost, and Class A dry pellets. Through this further analysis, a composting facility was recommended by the plan, with landfill disposal being a close second recommended alternative. In two thousand and twenty-two, the county was looking to complete a regional septic treatment facility and biosolids composting facility through the utilization of ARPA funds. Eventually, due mainly to project costs, the county funds were transferred to the Lakeside Water and Sewer District to expand their existing facility so that it could accept regional septic, but the composting facility was dropped from the project. With the regional composting facility no longer in play, the city again began analyzing what to do with biosolids. This effort also considered Glacier Gold's likely shutdown in Olney and considerations for long-term permitting requirements such as PFAS. The updated analysis considered composting, drying and landfilling, pyrolysis and gasification, supercritical water oxidation, and after additional discussions in coordination with the county landfill, dewatering improvements and landfilling. Ultimately, dewatering improvements and landfilling was selected as a recommended alternative. The recommended project will be designed to accommodate additional drying efforts to determine, or if determined, as necessary in the future. The agenda for tonight will be to provide a quick overview of the project. Oops, let me go back. Overview of the design bid build process, which is the traditional method that we've used here at the City of Kalispell. Comparison with the general contractor construction manager process, and then key considerations for Kalispell's project and why we are recommending moving forward with the GCCM process. And with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thanks, Keith. Thank you, Council. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Just, just to give you first an overview of what we're doing, we need to replace the existing belt filter press that, that is out there at the plant, and we're going to use a larger volute press, which you have one unit out there that's served you extremely well. The new unit will be slightly larger. And when, once we get rid of the belt filter press, we can get rid of these dissolved air flotation tanks that were designed and installed to operate with that belt filter press to help it thicken, or excuse me, Andy Water. So those two go hand in hand, those first two bullets. The belt filter press is also, I believe, about twenty-five years old at this point, and so it's time anyway to, to get rid of it. And the overall goal here is to achieve a little bit drier product that the landfill is happy to, to manage and work with for the next twenty, thirty years. With that new larger volute press comes a new polymer feed skid. We're also going to replace your waste activated sludge pumps. We need to put in a new conveyor system out there to get the biosolids from the new equipment to your trucks for offloading. There's new piping and valving, mechanical work, and we're really kind of rearranging the room for, like I said, the next twenty, thirty years. We want to be able to fit a dryer in that room in case we are unable to satisfy the county landfill requirements with the biosolids. We believe we, we will be successful on that, but if you'll remember when we talked to you a couple of months ago, this was sort of our Plan B contingency plan was to install a dryer if we absolutely had to. That, rearranging that room with the conveyor and the new volute press while keeping the plant's existing volute press online and operational is going to be quite the trick. It's a bit of a jigsaw puzzle in there. It's complex demolition and reconfiguration, and we have to, there's, there's no way staff can just not dewater biosolids out there. It happens every day, needs to happen every day. So that portion of the project is, is the most complex, and one of the reasons why we're leaning into this model that enables us to work with a contractor ahead of time to figure that, figure that out. Next slide, please. As Keith alluded, the design build process, you all have used to, to deliver projects to the public for decades. It's well understood, it's, I got a long track record. You all procure an engineer like myself, you hire us to develop the design, meaning the drawings and the specifications and the project manual, the contract, et cetera. We do that, you know, it might take us anywhere from six months to a year, depending on the complexity of the project, and then you put that out to bid. We help you with that process. Usually that takes at least a month. If we are fortunate, we get multiple responsive bids, and we select the, the lowest bidder that has met all the bidding qual, or bidding requirements, excuse me. And then we get through contracting with the general contractor and they build the project. The main feature there is it's a very linear process, which can be good, but also stretches out project delivery schedules. Next slide. The advantages of design bid build are, as I said, a, a very long track record. We all understand it very well, and there's a large body of law that's been built around design bid build. So generally, we know where the boundaries are, we know everybody's responsibilities well, we know what happens when things go south, so we, we just know what to expect. It's also usually the lowest possible cost, and, and in many ways, the most transparent way we can show the public that we're delivering the project for as low as we possibly can. Problem with that is it's not always best value, but we'll get to that. The drawbacks, other drawbacks with that lowest possible bid or lowest, lowest bid selection is that the risk is, is then on the owner from there on. And so if there's overruns because of change orders, because of things that were either missed during design because they were unforeseeable, or they were foreseeable and were missed by the engineer, the cost of those mistakes lies on the owner. Clearly defined roles, touched on that already. The, the disadvantages are low bid selection, so just having selection B pretty much without a doubt going to be on the lowest bidder unless they're shown to be unqualified promotes contractors underestimating costs while they're preparing their bid. And then some contractors will try to recover if they do underbid the project with change orders during construction. Also extremely difficult not to select that low bidder, even if they have questionable qualifications. You have to be very careful about that. It's very tough to prove in court that a contractor that believes they're qualified is not qualified, and it can, at best, delay your project for a couple of years, at worst, you may have to rebid it. It requires a hundred percent design documents prior to bidding, so that stretches out the schedule, as I said. We have to get through complete plans and specifications, sometimes, you know, dozens or hundreds of design sheets and thousands of pages of specifications before we can actually put the project out for public bidding. Already touched on the owner having the primary risk of overruns and change orders, and this last one's an important one. With design bid build, there's very limited ability to adjust the project scope to match the owner's budget. Bid alternates being the exception, but you have to foresee those well ahead of bid day and set up your bid documents with either bid schedules or bid alternates that you can elect not to award on bid day to, to cut your costs, but that's, it's a very coarse sort of correction versus having a finer ability to tune the project to your budget. And we'll get into that with.
If I could, I got a quick question about the disadvantages for the DBB. If it's state law on how we go through and, and select the, who the contractor is, why would the process not be like a not to exceed contract that's going to go through and have a contingency line item in it to, to make up for those unforeseen's in the, in the project?
I'm talking about on design build?
Yeah, the DBB where it says the, the low bid selection, you know, going for the lowest.
Because they're, they're bidding on a set of design plans, and, you know, if you're doing work underground, you're doing work that is only, can only be seen upon disassembly, you're going to have change orders. So all of a sudden, you can't, all of a sudden say, well, we're not going to exceed that project, or we're not going to exceed that price, because then you're going to have, you're not going to be able to build the project. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I just, sometimes I think that's what like a contingency is for, but, I mean, it's a different world, too.
We typically do have contingency in our budgets, but we don't bid the project with a contingency because, you know, we're anticipating that there may be an issue that would come up unforeseen that we would have to do a change order for, so we'll make sure that we have contingency in the budget. But if you have it as part of the bid, it's a, a target for the contractor to try to reach, you know, so then everything becomes an opportunity for a change order if you have contingency.
Right, yeah. I always felt that it was kind of undermined the low bid process and that somebody could come in with a change order and you wind up with a higher, higher cost than you would with, like, you don't know whether the next bidder would have come in under with fewer change orders with their bid than the person who came in with a lower bid but had a bunch of change orders that bumped it up. I mean, I, I know there's kind of no way around it, but I've always found that process a little.
And that's, that's why it's, you know, part of our process to really make sure that they're responsive bidder and check their references, but as Scott was saying, it, it is pretty hard, it can be a lengthy process if you're going to try to disqualify a bidder, and, and so that's just one of the disadvantages of DBB.
Thank you.
You are getting right at the heart of the whole issue, which is it, it sort of sets up an adversarial relationship where you ask somebody to, to win your project based on the lowest bid, and then they get really low, and then they scratch and claw for change orders, and, and like you pointed out, may end up where the second lowest bidder was in the first place. I believe we're on slide seven? Yes. Uh, this is showing the schedule differences that we've alluded to between design bid build and general contractor construction manager, the GCCM. So design bid build is up there at the top. You see, it's a very linear process where you first contract with us, we design the project, get to a hundred percent, and then we go through procurement, which is the bidding process, get the general contractor on board, and then they build the project. With the CCM or really any of these, what you'll hear called alternative project delivery methods or collaborative project delivery methods sometimes, the idea is to try to overlap some of those schedules. So you'll still go get your engineer, we will get into design, but then early in the design process, we'll help you go out and procure the GCCM with both quals and price. And we'll get them started in pre-constr, what we call pre-construction services, so they're actually working with us and you. They'll be in the design workshops where we'll work through what we're doing, we'll try to identify the most difficult or the most time constraint activities, any pre-procurement of equipment that we need to do, really try to get after the bottlenecks and work together on rectifying them so we can get them going sometimes as early as, you know, halfway through that pre-construction phase, which might be at a seventy percent design, especially if there's like excavation involved where we know what the excavation looks like maybe before we've finished all the, you know, one-inch valves and, and solenoids and all the little detailed things, we can get them started sooner. So it really enables us to shrink that overall project delivery timeline. Next slide. So design bid build has been the method for probably a hundred years, but in, in the last couple of decades, some of these collaborative and alternative delivery methods have gained popularity because owners frankly have discovered that they like these better, it gives them more freedom to control the design and more importantly, the cost of the project, sometimes as importantly, the delivery schedule or construction schedule. And it also has been proven to, to reduce the disputes that we have in complex construction projects because essentially you've taken that adversarial general contractor relationship and, and negated it because you put them on the design team. On the right, we have other acronyms that are commonly used, and you'll hear now that you know that these things are out there, you know, you'll start to see them, I'm sure it's just how it works, but construction manager, manager at risk is used in some parts of the country, construction manager, general contractor is used in, in I'd say even more parts of the country, CMGC, and then Montana picked general contractor, construction manager as their terminology, and that's in our Montana code annotated, so that's what we're going to use tonight and moving forward. Oddly enough, and well, I guess it's not odd, but Montana Department of Transportation has been able to use this alternative project delivery, collaborative project delivery for many, many years, and it did kind of come out of the horizontal, horizontal transportation world, and probably because that's a little, little bit easier, a little bit less detailed, I would say, in terms of just the number of small ancillary, you know, HVAC and process pipe and, and as complex as water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants get, it caught on there first. Many states in the country have been using it for five, ten, maybe fifteen years. Myself and others have been encouraging DEQ to open up and, and let the water wastewater world in Montana use it. The hurdle there has been that, like a few rural states in the country, Montana has long required the engineers to provide one hundred percent plans and specifications for DEQ's approval, and they gave DEQ themselves the authority to sign off or not sign off on those final plans and specifications before the owner could go start construction. So that kind of defeats the purpose of some of those schedule reductions that we were discussing earlier, and so it's been a little bit of a hurdle. Well, the City of Billings and the City of Great Falls have broken that, broken trail for us and done, between the two of them, three projects using the GCCM model on their water and wastewater projects, and we've talked to both parties and they, they like the model and are going to continue to use it. Their Montana code annotated does have a section describing what they want to see from this. It's Title eighteen, Chapter two, Part five, alternative project delivery contracts, and Susie included it in the council packet.
Just to add on there, too, we've been in communications with DEQ with this project, letting them know that we are looking at the alternative bid project, so they are on board with us moving forward with alternative bid process with the biosolids, too. So we've had that communications also. Sorry about that, Scott.
That's great, and, and essentially, it's new, but it's been developed and is new for a good reason, and that is issues with the old design bid build model. Uh, this is sort of a roadmap of how the process would work if you do approve adoption of it for this project. Council would approve it, we've got some slides coming on how that would look, but the city would form a selection committee for the GCCM and start establishing with us, we would lead this, or we would do the legwork, we would, you know, make sure that the, the city's project team and legal council is fully on board with the qualification, the request for qualification, that document, which would go out first. We have talked to several contractors already, we would send them that document, it's going to require some things for them to show us that they're capable of delivering projects under this model. We would review those, if we approve that they are, or we agree that they are qualified, and we would take the second step and request a more cost-based proposal that we would then select them based on. So it's a two-stage RFQ and then an RFP, and the RFP meaning that it's going to have a preliminary GMP in there, it's going to have some of their overhead costs, it's going to have some labor costs, it's not gonna, it's not a bid, and so it's not a, it's not final, and that's obvious because we're going to be at a fifty, fifty to sixty percent design and then want them in the room with us helping us finish the design before we go get the final GMP, which would come more at the hundred percent design, but I'm skipping ahead there. So we'll make a recommendation to, to council. If you all select them and approve, then we'll move into negotiating that contract just like we did with noticeable award and notice to proceed and design bid build world. We still do that with GCCM. Then we would finish the design, update the guaranteed maximum price with the GCCM, and if we liked that price, then we would move into the construction contract, which would be a separate contract awarded at that time. If you don't like that, or if you don't feel that the GCCM has fulfilled their contractual obligations in that pre-construction period, if you don't believe they're fair and honest in their pricing, you could always off-ramp there to either the second-ranked GCCM, or you can still bid the project. So it's kind of a win-win here. If you view it as, well, worst case, we'll still go bid the project, but best case, we'll find a contractor that's willing to treat us as a partner and work through this fairly and give us some open book access to their boss, and we get into construction and, and everybody has delivered a good project, which is the whole goal. Any questions on, on that process?
Yeah, I guess, I certainly see the benefits of this. I guess the one downside of it maybe is if they're involved in the design process, there's the risk that there's design for kind of extra bells and whistles that, you know, increase the cost and stuff. Is there any point in the process where you have some sort of expert review that says, okay, you don't really need this, this was kind of added in as a bell and whistle to increase that cost?
Yeah, it's a, it's a partnership, so they're, they're not completing the design by themselves, they're part of the design team, so the intent really is to, you know, whenever we start up a project, we get a contractor on board and we start construction, all of a sudden they're seeing things through their, their eyes, their, you know, their paradigm view of the contract differently than we do, and they, maybe there's a shortcut, a, a way to save some time and money, but at that point, it's too late, you know, we've got the contract set, so if you get them involved earlier on, they may be able to see some, some ways to, you know, ma, make that transition out of the belt filter press quicker, arrange the room differently, get to some of those, you know, critical or, you know, hard to, to complete steps in the process, and, and hopefully that'll help reduce the cost, but really it's just to, to get them in line with the design so that you're not, you're, you're both moving towards that same goal instead of their goal being to get a project done as quickly as possible and to make a profit. You know, they're coming along, they see what the, the goal of the whole project is, and they're coming alongside us and helping with the design, and, and the engineer will be on board that whole time to make sure that every critical step is there. critical step is there, and we're not just getting all the bells and whistles, we're getting what needs to be done for the project.
Ultimately, the city has control over what the project will look like at the end, so um they can't slip in bells and whistles without us approving it or moving through that and
Yeah, we we
have oversight on that.
And we have enough expertise on staff to be able to catch the bells and whistles there, yes, okay. And then I guess the second question is just, has there given that, you know, somewhat new, but old enough, ten years it sounds like in some places, to be able to kind of compare similar projects of this process versus the the older process to see, you know, whether or not prices are comparable?
I I think it'd be hard to do because it's it's so specialized, um you know, we're not doing this specific biosolids project, e- even if we compared it to another location in the state, their bidders are different bidders and prices are different, so I think it'd be hard to do, but we'll be able to, you know, look at the process as a whole and, you know, see how, you know, how the contract goes, how the construction goes, um how the relationship goes with the contractor.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I would I would just add a couple of things on the um the bells and whistles idea, um it's one reason why I'm a fan of going and getting the GMP at that early stage, the fifty, sixty percent, and then the contractor in is as interested in in defending against that GMP for the rest of the project, like they don't wanna add bells and whistles that um put them at higher risk of going over the GMP because, like I said, it's guaranteed and they would be on the hook for that, so they don't want scope creep uh anymore than the the city's team would. Uh and then on the cost, i- it is difficult, I think it's early stages here, like I said, we haven't done much enough of it in Montana to to compare too much, but the the idea is that your budget drives the the GMP and and you you're you're defending that line basically, and so you have control there. And you're pricing things with your contractor during design to say, well, we just can't afford that, and so we're not gonna do it versus operating in sort of a black box up to bid day with the design bid build method, and then you get a price on bid day, and it's the first time you've seen it, and you either have to sign it or uh let it go. And so the idea is that you have some control over that final cost, um more so at least than you do with design bid build. Okay, slide eleven. Uh this is, we jumped right into GMP and guaranteed maximum price and and acted like all of you know exactly what that is, which um I I I don't know that that's the case or not, but just to just take a pause here and define what that is, so on the left side there, the guaranteed maximum price is a contractual cost ceiling agreed upon between the owner and the GCCM, establishing the highest amount the owner will pay for the project, including construction overhead and contractor fees, profit, the whole nine yards. There are um, there are owners and engineers out there who often go and procure these CMARS or CMGCs or GCCMs or whatever recommend you wanna use without a price um early, early, like maybe uh at the twenty percent design stage, and just treat them um as a design partner and don't get a GMP until, say, ninety percent, and then are um often upset with how high that number is. What we wanna do, is there a question? What we're gonna do is bump that up, uh go get the the first GMP with that initial RFP at um somewhere around fifty or sixty percent design. That GMP is not, is not a hard number as long as both the owner and the GCCM a- uh agree to move it between the sixty and the hundred, so you can move it up if you agree, or you keep it hard, but you need to work with your GCCM to then not add bells and whistles from sixty to a hundred percent that would increase it. So you're working on that number with them from that sixty to a hundred percent, that is that is the biggest difference between uh GCCM and design bid bill. And I said, if if you get to that ninety or a hundred percent and you either, you know, don't um don't trust that the contractor's working in good faith with you, or they just can't get their GMP to your budget, then you can off-ramp to that second GCCM, or you can go bid the project. This uh this is just further showing you how the process works so that um you all are competent before we ask you to um approve it, that you understand what we wanna do with it. I think we've already covered a lot of these, but um the advantages are that we still get to uh select our contractor early um based on calls. So we're we're getting, we 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 have control, a little bit of control over who we get to build our projects versus uh like I said, sometimes the lowest bidder might be somebody whose qualifications are not exactly what we would want out of someone who's gone and built four or five projects uh of similar size and um complexity in a wastewater treatment plant, it might be somebody who's done a couple that if they pushed it, they could push it to the courts to decide, we don't, we don't want that. Um, we want people that we trust, that know how to build these, to be um billing them for us and and working on it with the GMP for us. We get to work with those contractors during design, uh which is uh I think without question been very beneficial to this model. Uh, you know, engineers are good at engineering, but uh contractors are good at building, and sometimes we uh aren't keeping up with all the latest construction methods, or sometimes they're better at seeing some creative cost-saving measure or whatever it might be, and so we want to be able to collaborate with the folks that are building these facilities um before we get into um bid. Uh already touched on ability to shorten project schedule. These are sometimes referred to as open book, they're not like one hundred percent open book, but we do have what I would call cost transparency. We can um, we can we the RFP contract, uh there's flexibility there on how much we wanna see. Um, there is uh, you know, if you if you ask for everything, then you're gonna drive their costs up because they're not uh gonna have any ability to to move within the contract themselves, and so there's a, I think, a sweet spot there where we ask for, uh like I said earlier, um give us some of your labor costs, give us your major equipment costs, give us your proposed overhead and profit numbers, give us your general conditions or mobilization numbers, um so it's not a bid, but it is uh a a window into how expensive one contractor might be versus another. And then we would work with them in that uh that same sort of transparency through that GMP process so that, you know, like I said, it's all set up so that we have trust of of how they're pricing the work that we're asking them to do. The end goal is reducing claims and change orders and therefore cost overruns, those still lie on the owner, but if we work with the contractor during the last part of design, uh the goal, and I believe this has um been proven, is that we can reduce those claims and change orders. As alluded to earlier, adjust project scope to accommodate owner's budget, so um you have the ability, say we're at a seventy percent uh design phase and we know we've been high on the GMP or higher than we're uh comfortable with, and we can maybe eliminate some of those uh bells and whistles that came up earlier to get that back down. Um, you have the ability to do that during design and not um not sitting on bid day with a project that you can't afford. It's potentially a good contracting method when contractors are busy, so this is one of the big ones Keith alluded to early is that most importantly, we want contractors um wanting to work on this project and and showing up and delivering the project for us. We we just don't have time with Glacier Gold's schedule to have to rebid this uh or shell it and come back later, we just, we don't have those options, and so that's the certainty we're looking for, is that we have a contractor that's good and qualified and their GMP fits within your budget. Uh disadvantages, this um, I think we were working on the thread of the sweater here earlier, where the contractor may request a large contingency. That is more in the models I alluded to earlier where where some owners partner with the contractor without seeing any pricing and and then working through design and seeing a GMP later. Um, we we can, if we would like, actually dictate what the contingency will be um in that RFQ process. So that if they're all working on um off the same table, or we ask them to propose uh their contingency for the project, and if somebody's proposing twenty-five percent, another contractor's proposing ten, um then that may factor into our decision of who to select. Uh one of the drawbacks is that the pre-construction services provided by the um uh contractor does add to the to the cost of engineering, I mean, you 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 view that service they're providing as working with you and your engineer during um design. It's a professional services fee, and it won't be a large number, but um they deserve to get paid for their time and effort.
What would you say, what would you anticipate, like, the percentage increase, like low single digits or on the engine cost?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking it's probably uh if we scope it right for them, maybe forty or fifty thousand dollars on this project, which is um, I mean, you can think about it as roughly a four million dollar project, so um not very significant, um.
Well, I was I was thinking specifically the engineering, not the whole project, but the the um kind of the design, I guess, because the pre-construction is is part of the design, right, stage, like that particular stage, kind of how how much does it add on to that segment?
It's provided, right, it's provided by the GCCM, they're adding um what is, you know, forty thousand over four million is maybe one percent, and um I am embarrassed to say, I don't know exactly our percentage of dis- um design of of our contract, but um, you know, seven, eight percent, and then we add one percent kind of thing, and then the whole goal is by getting them involved that um you're getting the the best construction project that you can out of the contract, and so I would say that one percent is is money well-spended. Is that?
Yeah, thank you.
Answer the question?
Yep.
Say, uh owner remains financially responsible for di- design errors and omissions. Um, that is true, uh unless the contractor blows their guaranteed maximum price because of their inefficiencies. They still have to prove to us, um your team, that uh there was a change in conditions from uh that, you know, ninety, hundred percent phase that resulted in a higher cost to them, and they were there at the table, so that becomes much more difficult. Unless these things are truly, truly unforeseen, like say you hit a uh a garbage truck-sized boulder during your excavation, we don't have ex- excavation on this project, so it's kind of a bad example, but just that unforeseeable, that you didn't hit with your geotechnical um investigation, then everybody's generally gonna agree, yeah, that was different, we didn't realize that was there, and it's a problem, and people deserve to get paid to go uh blast it out of there and remove it. But like I said, the whole goal there is is to reduce those um foreseeable uh errors and omissions and reduce that portion of the project, that that contingency portion of the project. Um, and then the disadvantages, there's limited regional contractors here with with experience, a lot of the experienced contractors are coming out of Colorado or Utah uh or Washington, who states that have been doing this for a while, um and they're nationals, um. Uh, that's not to say they're all that way, Dick Anderson Construction completed um Billings' latest project and showed they can do it. You know, the work, the construction work that they're doing at the end of the day is the same, it's gonna be more about showing how they uh have experience collaborating with owners and engineers to deliver the best project, and so we'll work through that in the RFP and RFQ process to make sure that uh we don't have somebody that just completely doesn't understand uh GCCM, and we would eliminate those folks. Next slide. Uh, so the question, why use uh GCCM on this project, and it's a fair question because these models grew um out of a desire to use them on large, complex, um, you know, big projects where we could really get at the value of having the contractor on the team and and really move the needle. This project is fairly well-defined, um it's fairly, well, it's relatively small, I will say, um uh for this, but there's a couple of of benefits of it that we're really after here, which, like I said earlier, in ensuring that we have interested contractors prior to finalizing design. We don't want you all to pay us to go through six months of detailed design and then put it out to bid and realize that there's nobody um able with availability that wants to do the work, because that results in um eventually both results in probably a more expensive project, but also a big time delay, and we just don't have time for the time delay on this with Glacier Gold. Working with them early can help ensure that construction schedule is accomplished, so we can get them started on some things ahead of time, and on this project, I see some of that being uh demolition and procurement of equipment. Uh, we can select partially based on qualifications and overall value, so we're not locked into just getting the lowest bidder. And every owner that I've worked with that has used this model um eventually grows to love that portion of this more than any other, the ability to um prevent the phrase we sometimes use in the business that I don't love, but you know, you don't want somebody just started up a company out of their garage building your wastewater treatment plant project, right? And yes, we should be able to eliminate those folks from bidding with qualifications, but like I said, sometimes it's challenging, um and if they challenge it in court, then at minimum, they can slow your project down, so it's better to to be able to select your contractor based on just like you do with your engineer, their resume and their track record and their reputation more than just their lowest bid. And then, as I said earlier, uh it'll enable us to work through with the folks that are actually gonna do the work, uh what is a fairly complex demolition and rearrangement of that dewatering room uh while maintaining plant operations, while while enabling you all to still dewater your biosolids. Uh, any questions on the model or the why before we get into uh Montana's code?
So, um with the DBB model, we're moving away from that because we're having a hard time finding people to do these projects, and the GCCM model is gonna open up more possibilities for more contractors?
Yeah, we we have had some problems in the past getting um interest in bids, and once you're you're kind of married into a project, it's hard to go back and, you know, after you open up the the bid, you don't have the opportunity to go back and change the how you get there, the the delivery of that. Uh so that's one thing, but the the big thing is that Glacier Gold is is closing, and we have a finite schedule. Um, so, you know, we we anticipate moving forward with procurement of that volute press and this process to get a contractor on board early, just to help our schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, when when, if the contractors don't show up on bid day, that drives up your project cost and delays your project, and uh we're And uh, we're, we, we don't have infinite time to get this done. We want to get it done when Glacier Gold is ready to shut their doors and um, and let that go. Um, the other thing I would say is, is the GCCM um, enables you to develop a contractor a little bit more than the design bid build. Like you can go out and say, hey, we're doing this new model. We're going to have a, a request for qualifications that um, you know, will, will enable you to see if we believe you're qualified to do the project before we put you through any sort of cost model um, proposal. Um, and we're hoping that they uh, appreciate that as well and then come through with um, some uh, good proposals at that step. I think we're on 15, yes. So this is uh, the, the, the last part of the presentation in these few slides. Um, are breaking down what Montana Code annotated says about how you have to do this. So governing bodies, AKA City of Kalispel, contemplating the use of the GCCM model. To vote on its usage and the approval must be based on at least two of the following three statements being true. One, the project has, I'm putting quotes there, significant schedule ramifications. And alternative project delivery is necessary to meet critical deadlines. I think we've, we've hit this enough that uh, the schedule is probably our most um, challenging constraint on the project. You know, we, a lot of our projects, we, we have soft deadlines. You know, it might be for uh, addressing growth or replacing equipment that's falling apart or dealing with a permit issue, but here it's um, it's pretty hard line in the sand on when we need to be able to not take biosolids to um, Glacier Gold's facility. Number two, alternative delivery will contribute to significant cost savings. Or, and/or, number three, the project presents significant technical complexities that necessitate the use of an alternative delivery project contract. Um, next slide, move through these. Um, I think one and three are the most um, solid reasons for uh, council to approve of this delivery model. Um, we've said it probably half a dozen times, um, just in the last 45 minutes, but there's just no time for a no bidders outcome here or bids that are so much higher than the city's budget that we have to go back and rebid it. We don't, we don't have that kind of time. Uh, as far as contributing to significant cost savings, I would say um, maybe. Um, certainly if you're comparing to very high bids or second bid periods where you just didn't get any bids. Um, those are fairly notorious for coming back higher. There was a reason why folks weren't interested the first time around and they see the owner coming back out and see it as an opportunity of, well, they're in a real pickle here, so we'll just um, increase our costs. Um, but to me, the other uh, the, the strongest besides number one is three in that um, that complex uh, demolition and um, dewatering room reconfiguration we have to do is, is difficult. We're um, we're struggling there right now with some um, uh, it's just some spaghetti junction kind of things going on in there with the conveyance and moving around existing equipment and having to keep it in service. We can't just turn it off and cut it um, out and move it. Uh, Aaron and his team have to be able to operate it every, every day, all day. And um, um, that's going to create a challenge. So it'd be nice to have the GCCM there with us to help us develop ways and means to keep the plant in operation while we do some of that uh, uh, surgery, for lack of a better term, on the rest of the room. So our recommendation would be to approve the use of the GCCM delivery model. Um, enabling us to increase contractor engagement and um, at least increase our chances, if not ensure that we have uh, engaged bidders, people that want to come do the project and will show up with an RFQ or excuse me, a statement of qualifications and um, a proposal. We want to be able to support maintenance of plant operations during reconfiguration of the room and accomplish the completion date per the timeline, which is um, essentially set by Glacier Gold's shutdown schedule. Um, if you do approve, um, we would tie it directly to that Montana Code annotated selection criteria. Um, there's a little bit of additional language in there, just holding our, and your team's feet to the fire on making sure that that process is, is uh, fair and just on the selection of the GCCM. Um, and we would pull those into a resolution and provide that to you. Or uh, I should say, uh, Keith and Suzie will, will help. Well, thank you for your time and um, I imagine uh, there's been some great questions so far, so.
Yeah, so I, I guess in summary, if um, you have, as long as everyone is in agreement tonight, we would like to try to move forward with this process. And that would mean that at the next council meeting, we'd come forward with a resolution that meets that uh, MCA requirement, um, that would designate our process as well as meet those un, you know, unbiased um, uh, process requirements of the code. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, any thoughts, questions on it?
Yeah, I, I think that uh, bringing the contractor in, I really like seeing that uh, bringing the contractor in early on in the design process, I think is really key on, and then the pre-construction aspect of it too. Getting things done that you can get done uh, earlier on instead of after the whole process is, you've gone through the process, you've, you may, you may get 10, 15% of some, some stuff done by the time you go through and get to the end. So, and then the other aspect of the contractor being a part of the, especially in something like this, when you have, like he was saying, you know, the spaghetti of pipes and everything is, through that design process, the contractor is learning, you know, the room. Doesn't have to do it at the end and, and pick up from square one. They, they're in the process of learning the whole project as it's going forward. So I, I think it's a great idea to do it that way.
We did, I think 25 years ago when we built North Valley Hospital aboard, we sat and walked through the same process. Do we design, do the design build bid, the design bid build process? Or do we bring in the general contractor with the architect, with our design team? And we elected to go through this process, the alternate method. And it delivered a much better project that was on budget, didn't have the change orders. And everybody understood what was happening, every step of the way through that project. And Scott, don't, please don't take offense at this, but when we have engineers, engineers and architects draw things.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we used to have, as, as a contractor, I used to call them cartoonists. They're great at drawing things on paper, but until you actually put the rubber to the road and have to build it.
Yep.
It's, you, working as a team, you know, it's scary, it's easy to draw something two-dimensional on paper. Then the minute you hit 3D on design, the, the actual contractor is there to say, this is how we can really actually make this work.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to have that process. And this project is unique enough that um, we're going to design this once. It's, it's not like there's a canned design for what we're doing. And I think it makes sense to go down this process from what I can see.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Scott, I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation in layman's terms. And with all the acronyms and everything that could be so technical, I really appreciate you spelling it out for us so I could understand it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowd?
Um, you know, I, this makes a lot of sense. It's uh, since 2020, since COVID happened, uh, a delay in a project for a year doubles the price of a project. If, if it's only double, right? All of our capital projects actually should be run this way. This is a, a new methodology in project management with multiple streams starting at the beginning. The serial process, I think you're going to find is going to die over time for large projects just because uh, it's just going to continue to be that cost increase the longer something stretches out. So um, I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I didn't build a commercial project that wasn't this way when I was building.
Mm-hmm.
Other thoughts?
Makes sense.
Makes sense to.
Do it.
All right, we'll, we'll proceed down those lines then.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, City Manager Report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a couple items. Um, first one, on April 7th, um, Flathead County Emergency Manager will be here to present uh, a resolution adopting the Western Region Montana um, Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, that is a multi-county effort, but then there'll also be an appendix that sent out the draft uh, several weeks ago, um, related to Flathead County's portion of that. It's been a multi-year effort uh, amongst the region and Flathead County related to that. They've been approved by FEMA, so the next step is for uh, the adoption of that. But she'll be here to present on the work that was done with a potential resolution. That'll be on April 7th. The only other thing is uh, be in Haila for league meetings uh, throughout uh, starting Wednesday of this week. And um, you know, they're, they're set aside league meetings, but we'll definitely be watching uh, potential bills that pop up in case we need to provide input on those as well. And that's all, Your Honor.
Anything from council? Nothing? Um, I'm going to wait till next week.